The regular Evans City Council meeting scheduled for 12:00 PM March 3rd will now come to order. Roll call.
Councilor Rousey.
Here.
Councilor Koyvenen.
Here.
Councilor Purpich.
Here.
Councilor Lillis.
Here.
Mayor Vice Solovich.
Here.
Approval of city council meeting February 15th. No one has any questions or changes, call for motion that we approve these minutes.
So move.
Motion made by Purpich, we have a support.
Support.
Support by Koyvenen, any further discussion? All in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Approval of agenda. Anybody have any changes, additions? If not, I'll call for a motion that we approve the agenda as it is printed.
So move.
Motion made by Lillis, we have a support.
Support.
Support by Purpich, any further discussion? All in favor.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carried. Appointments and presentations. Reappointment of Kathy Murphy to the Park Commission. Reappointment of Michael Newman to the Golf Course Commission. And reappointment of Camille Newman to the Golf Course Commission. I don't think we ever had any new applicants for any of those. Lucky, we're lucky the ones keep re-upping here.
All three are very good at what they do, so.
Well, that's right, no one has a problem, I'd like to just call for a motion that we approve all three.
So move.
Motion made by Purpich, support by Rousey, any further discussion?
Thanks to each and every one of them for their long tenure of service. Really appreciate them serving on their board.
Well, you know, you got the experience of them being on there too, that's, you know, a value.
Absolutely.
To those commissions and it's, you just don't have the interest anymore, that's, I don't know what it is. Any further discussion? All in favor.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carried. Consent agenda, approval of payroll, February 1st through the 15th. Approval of claims, February 2022. And request from the Police Chief Lindy to attend 2022 Minnesota Chiefs of Police Association Executive Training in April in Duluth. Anybody have any questions on any of the items?
Well, that, that, number three, I, I don't know about that one.
You're gonna be staying down there or transferred?
I'm not sure yet.
Well.
It all depends if we approve it or not. Where's that in Duluth?
He conveniently was at it for the budget.
Where are they hosting that, the deck? I hope you're going armed down there, aren't you? When you go down to Duluth, bigger safety item than a seatbelt is a handgun, the way that place is going. Well, I'll leave that to go another time. If no one has any questions, I call for a motion that we approve the consent agenda.
So move.
Motion made by Rousey, do we have a support?
Support.
Support by Lillis, any further discussion? All in favor.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carried. No public hearings, we have no unfinished business. Get to new business. Minnesota lawful gambling application for exempt permit for Iron Mining Association at the Range Civic Center. Is that the first time they did that? Cause yeah, I haven't seen them.
This is right up at the, at the club?
Yeah.
Yeah, I've never seen the I M A do that.
No, I haven't either.
We had to raise a little money.
Well, there isn't a whole lot of, uh, time, you know, I mean, the curling season is, what, October to April and, and of, end of March?
Cause that place has been packed with cars and go by there. Like I say, it's probably coming to the end here. Anybody have any questions on this application? Otherwise, I'll call for a motion that we approve this.
So move.
Motion made by Purpich, we have a support.
Support.
Support by Koyvenen, any further discussion? All in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Item number two, resolution accepting facility plan and ordering 2023 West Evans Sanitary Sewer Force Main Improvement Projects and Preparation of Plans and Specifications by Benchmark Engineering. Anybody have any questions on that, Jerry or Alan? If not, call for a motion that we approve this resolution.
So move.
Motion made by Koyvenen, we have a support.
I'll support.
Support by Purpich, any further discussion? All in favor.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carried. Resolution, item three, resolution authorizing the application and receipt of funds from the Minnesota Department of Natural Resources Local Trees Trails Connection Program, and that is for our failed pond.
That's just the, the blacktop around or fixing up the low spots, is that what this is for?
We're rerouting that one, what is it, the east, east or south side?
Yeah, the east section we were gonna reroute, um, and we did budget for that. But then we found out that there's some grants that the D N R are giving on regional trails. So I started looking into that, me and Mark started looking into that and, um, they do an 80/20 grant if you get it. Which would pretty much pay for the whole project with the 40,000 that we have budgeted. So that's why we wanna put in for that. Hopefully lucky enough to get that, we could do the whole failed pond.
It would be nice.
That would be nice.
We used so much though there.
That's got heavy use for a lot of different things.
Yes. Good job, Jerry.
Anybody have any more questions for Jerry or Alan, or call for a motion that we approve this resolution?
So move.
Motion made by Koyvenen, we have a support.
Support.
Support by Rousey, any further discussion? All in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Item number four, resolution authorizing the city of Evans to make application to and accept funds from the Minnesota Department of Iron Range Resources and Rehabilitation Failed Pond. Is that for the same project, basically?
Yeah, that's for the same project, but, um, we don't receive a D N R grant, we can still go for 50/50 on this, uh, east trail.
Well, anything is better than us having to pay the whole thing.
And if they, if we decided to do the whole thing instead of just that east side.
Yeah.
We could get up to a 50/50 grant from the I triple R B for that too. So I'm not sure if you'd be interested in, you know, doing something like that, cause it would up what we have budgeted.
Yeah.
But I was just gonna put in for, uh, for the east side for that 50/50.
Well, let's see how it shakes up, cause it all has to be done eventually, yeah.
That doesn't extend past south of the bridge, or it's just the bridge around? Because I know the trail goes down the fail.
Yeah, it doesn't go up that much, you know, just, just around the park.
Okay.
And the parking lot is included.
Yeah, cause there is no way to expand any parking down that place, cause it gets pretty full sometimes. Even if there's not an event there. On that, cause yeah, it doesn't look like we have any room. On that note, uh, we have somebody who wants to make this motion that we approve the resolution.
So move.
Motion made by Rousey, we have a support.
I'll support.
Support by Purpich, any further discussion? All in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Item number five, resolution establishing precincts and polling places after redistricting. Nothing looks like a change to me here.
And this seems like it works pretty well, doesn't it, stuff? You know, you're not scattered all over the place and when we, you have elections, we're only waiting for two voting places, you know, precincts to come in, so I think it's a lot better, I think at one time we had like four or five and it's, you know. And everybody can get into the, you know, get into the auditorium with the handicap accessible, there's parking, so I think it's a win-win.
You know, it is, and it's the staffing issue that I think you were having, weren't you, Steph getting judges? Yeah, so now you got one facility, it's nice, you know, big, too, that's, that works out pretty good, I see there's a lot of different meetings that go on there from, uh, not only our standpoint. If no one has anything else to comment, call for a motion that we approve the resolution establishing precincts and polling places.
So move.
Motion made by Purpich, we have a support.
Support.
Support by Lillis, any further discussion? All in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Number six, resolution approving state of Minnesota Joint Powers Agreement with the city of Evans on behalf of its city attorney and police department. Is this the first time we ever did anything like that? That's the only one I wasn't familiar.
Is this, uh, if I read this right, this is a couple of year thing?
Five.
Five years? Goes on?
Yeah.
And it's everything that you need?
Yeah.
Yeah, I didn't think we, you know, it is, was, was it, what it, it is what it is, I didn't think we proved something like this, not that it matters, but.
The electronic site of things is, you know, all it is is taken over, so.
Taken over everything.
Definitely, uh, appropriate agreement.
If no one has any more questions, call for a motion that we approve this resolution.
I'll make the motion.
Motion made by Purpich, we got a support.
Support.
Support by Lillis, any further discussion? All in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Number seven, cooperative agreement between St. Louis County and the city of Evans for 2022 and 2023 curb and sidewalk repairs. Sure nice to get that extra help from the county on these projects. Jerry, how long we been partnering with them on that stuff?
Uh, I bet you about seven years, eight years. Maybe a little longer than that, I mean, it's been going on for a while, it is a really good program for us. We got a lot more, a lot more done with that little additional money.
Well, we got a lot of county stadium streets in Evans, you know, too, that sort of really helps. Anybody have any questions? If not, to call for a motion that we approve this agreement between the county and the city of Evans.
So move.
Motion made by Purpich, we got a support. Support by Rousey, hey, you gotta speak up a little bit.
Sorry, sorry. That wasn't very enthusiastic.
Yeah, I was like, okay.
I had a wave of pain. Oh, okay. The bigger pain is coming next.
Any further discussion?
Bracing herself.
All in favor.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carried. Item number eight, settle agreement and release of claims between the city of Evans and Jesse Howe. Everybody's got their feelings and like I say, the way things are going up, the costs and everything are rising, I, I hate to shell out 120 grand. Maybe, uh, a little reality might set in because we had to set a, a baseline when we had the negotiations. The circumstances change, I, you know, I feel I would just assume go the monthly and maybe we might get a counter offer down the road, a little more realistic. And see what happens.
How many years until he's 65?
Twenty.
Really?
Well, you read the obituaries, I tell you what, it's pretty sad, you see all the people in there. And it's no specific age either. It's getting just terrible.
Well, I guess my opinion stays pretty solid with what it was last time, I think it's in the best interest of the city of Evans to settle it now and get it over with rather than risk the liability for over a 20-year period and, uh, second part of my argument would be that, um, the settlement comes as a result of a mediation. Professional mediation that we sent our staff to do. Um, I think we need to, um, follow through with their mediation process and support this, uh, agreement. That's my take.
The whole law was to provide insurance coverage, not a fat payday, that's the thing, you know, I'm looking at here.
Oh, I agree with that whole hardly.
You know what I mean, and we still got another deal, we're not done with him yet, you gotta work with his company, and I don't know if the city will get dragged into that. So it really.
Could we be dragged in, Mitch?
No. It's all, that's all covered by insurance.
Well, I'm in favor of siding with Brian and get him off the books and that's enough.
Well, like I say, with what, uh, you look at the pump prices, the costs we got affecting us. And that affects everything we do. And this, we already paid 30,000, so now we're into this for 150,000, there's your, our 6% levy. Throw it in the garbage can. That's, no, that's just my thoughts, if I can stretch it out, like, cause, uh, I'm, I'm willing to spin the roll of dice on this one.
I went both ways on this, it'd be nice, we sent them down there to bargain for us and they did a great job bargaining. They got what we wanted. And my thought is, I don't wanna give them anything. You know, that's just how I am, because I have a sour taste in my mouth and we had to pay something else out before that, which, if it was up to me, would have never happened. If we, you know, I would go against it, but be willing to open up negotiations, you know, within a year or so. But that's just how I feel.
Open for maybe a counter offer of lesser.
I, I just don't believe that the city of Evans should have to pay anything. If you want to leave, which he's gone, that's really not my fault. You know, I mean, we all have problems in life, and I can't specify about his problems, my problems, but I don't think the city should be on a hook for it.
Is he getting city insurance until age 65 or no? Yeah. He's getting city insurance and and I don't see any reason we, we should have to pay him 120 or above that.
We would not, we wouldn't be giving him city insurance.
No.
Yeah, we need to clarify that.
120 is a one-time lump sum payout. What we're doing is, yeah, what we're doing is, and Lou is paying him until he reaches 65, you know, which would go on for, you know, many, many years, that we would pay his monthly family health insurance premium or be on the hook to do that until he's Medicare eligible. What this is, is we're just paying, it's a one-time lump sum payment, that's what we negotiated to do was to, was to buy it out at a lump sum rather than pay it out over years, with the savings being, the liability over all the years is $465,000 and we're buying it out for 120. But yeah, but once he's bought out, he doesn't continue to collect the insurance. He gives up his right to have that insurance, that's part of the agreement. And regardless if he survives 20 years or not, we pay every year till he would have been. Right, so, yeah, no, so, so right, if there wasn't a settlement and he's eligible for, if he's eligible for, which he is by statute, uh, subject to our appeal in front of an administrative law judge, but, uh, if, so if we didn't have a settlement, he has the right, right now by statute, to stay on the city's health insurance plan under a family plan, and then even if he passed away, say, three years from now, his family would continue to be covered, same arrangement, his family would continue the coverage until the point in time when he would have reached Medicare eligibility had he not passed away. So either way. We're linked into that, we're locked into that figure no matter what. Correct.
What, what is the yearly cost for health insurance?
Is that what you wanted me to say?
That's what I wanted you to say.
What's the yearly cost for health insurance?
I'll say 35,000.
Okay. So you, so you stretch it out like an installment loan? Or else pay a huge lump sum and you're still, to me, anybody can sue anybody for anything, it doesn't matter.
I think this is a result, not a result of a lawsuit, is it, Mitch, this is a result of an, uh, settlement agreement and a mediation on a statutory-driven issue, correct?
Yep, so by statute, the P E R A, state agency, determined that he is entitled to this statutory benefit, uh, P E R A made that determination, subject to the city's right to appeal that determination to an administrative law judge, which we did, we have filed an appeal on behalf of the city to an administrative law judge, and there is a contested case going on before the administrative law judge, but like any sort of litigation, when parties are engaged in litigation, uh, normally in this day and age, parties will go through some sort of a settlement negotiation process or, in this case, a mediation, to see if they can come to a mediated resolution of the dispute instead of continuing forward with the contested case proceeding, so. So that's, yeah, so that's what we did, we went through the mediation and then that's what this settlement agreement is the result of. It's going on now, the mediation is going on now, so we're. No, mediation, we concluded. It's over. But I thought we appealed it.
They've reached a tentative agreement.
No, no, so there was a, there was a contested case going on where we challenged P E R A's determination. We would have the burden of proving in front of an administrative law judge that P E R A was wrong in its determination. So that, that litigation is currently pending, but it's really technically on hold because we went to mediation to see if the parties could negotiate a compromise resolution of the dispute instead of continuing with the contested case proceeding. So that's, we had a mediation with a qualified mediator who facilitated the settlement discussions, and then as a result of that mediation, uh, we came up with this tentative settlement agreement that's on the table before you, but of course, uh, it is always subject to final approval by the Evans City Council. So then my, and if I understand this right, if we voted no, then it would continue? If we vote yes, everything goes away? That would be your choice, so if you vote no, we can either continue with the contested litigation to challenge the P E R A determination, or, I think, basically what the mayor's position is, I think, is the mayor saying, let's not do a settlement and let's also not contest the case, let's just pay the benefit. By, by the statute. Right.
And if they wanna open up negotiations, maybe for something different, oh, let's leave that door open.
No, I'm a gambling man, but I'm not that kind of a gambler, if you, you know, we're looking at 120,000 versus potentially.
Here's the choice, if you got health insurance now and you're gonna get double health insurance, you get zero, what is the incentive to?
We just stipulate to a dismissal of the case currently before the administrative law judge, and then you would just be complying with the statutory requirement that you would pay his family health insurance from now until, uh, his Medicare eligibility date.
And I guarantee you, that would not be an outcome they want. Cause you know, health insurance now, especially with the Affordable Care Act, everybody's getting insured, things like that. So that, that's my thoughts, I would like to roll the dice and see if, uh.
So you're in favor of, of just dropping the whole suit, the whole thing altogether and pay the insurance?
Reject it, and we'll be open because it's either they get something or nothing. And maybe might come back and negotiate, call Mitch up and save him. Jerry, what can we do?
I see both sides of this.
Oh, definitely.
We can definitely go and save, or we could just roll the dice and, which, that goes my way, cause I don't wanna give them anything. Was this individual retired or terminated? His, his separation was pursuant to a separation agreement release, uh, that was entered into a long time ago. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so. But, but he had the right to continue to, he had the right to pursue disability benefits through P E R A. So that's not a right that, that's not a right that can be waived under a separation agreement document.
See, that's what I thought we were done with him, then he ever shoe dropped.
So no, he has, he has a right, you can't, you separate with a public employee, you can't ask him to waive his right to P E R A benefits, you can't. You can't put that in a negotiated settlement, that would not be a valid waiver of applying, so. So when, so we, he gave up his rights to file grievances or challenge any sort of a termination. And, but, you know, one of the rights he's still preserved is the right to go and apply for a P E R A disability, and that includes if the disability is determined to be in the line of duty, uh, then, you know, it triggers the statutory requirement that the city would have to pay that benefit until his Medicare eligibility date. And that's what we were appealing, that if it was a line of duty or not. Correct. Correct, yeah.
And we had somebody who gave a ruling, didn't you have an expert on it, Mitch, to talk?
Yeah, so there are, I mean, there's, there's different experts who give different opinions on the issue.
That's the whole thing.
Right. There's their. Their expert and there's our expert. That's what I was just gonna say, they have an expert and we have an expert. That's right. So when you have our experts say there's nothing wrong and their, theirs says there is something, so who decides then, the judge? The judge decides.
Judge, yeah.
So the judge listens to the expert testimony from both sides and then the judge makes the determination of which testimony carries more weight. And that judgment's on hold right now, pending this. Yeah, that, that, the hearing process is on hold on whether, on whether you're gonna do this settlement.
Well, we're not, we're not shutting the door, we're just not, I'm not comfortable with giving that much money, period. I'm a negotiator, that's kind of, you know, doing deals, cause we set the baseline, what you had to do to begin with.
I think that's the biggest problem, was our levy was 150,000. And we'd be giving that away right now, so, in other words, it'd be like going zero.
And that's not counting the rise in costs of different things, you know, what, what's going on in the economy and especially the fuel costs, you know, much our equipment's been running with all these snowstorms.
Yeah, I have to agree with it. I think, I think may, I think maybe dropping the, the case altogether might be the way to go.
Cause see, the door is open.
Pay the insurance.
Well, I think we beat this up so much that we should just take a vote, because there's pros and cons all the way around here.
Well, there's, it's, it's a two-sided argument, is what it is.
I mean, yeah.
Nobody's right or wrong, it's just where we're positioned.
We could, we could visit this in another year, I, I don't know, you know.
They might approach us with something different that's more acceptable, cause we got rising operating costs, because, like everybody else, look at the grocery store and things, you know, I mean, that's just the economy.
And if we're already paying his insurance anyway, I'd.
We're not paying his insurance.
We're not paying it yet.
We're not paying his insurance?
Yeah, we haven't been.
He's evidently has insurance somewhere else.
But if we drop this suit, we.
He would have, he would be entitled to it.
He'd have to request it then, wouldn't he, from us?
Yeah, he would just come in and make a request to be put on the family plan, right.
Yeah.
Yeah. But then we go at $3,500 a month for, let's just say 10, let's say a year, and then maybe he'd come back and open up negotiations again.
Or maybe a lot less than that, too.
Or maybe not.
That's.
The question.
Yeah, that's.
You know, I, if I was in that position, I would very much welcome full-time city medical coverage for the rest of my, or until I reach age 65, absolutely. Absolutely.
But who knows how the insurance plan will change years forward, too, you know what I mean?
I know, it's gonna get more expensive.
It could not be, it could not be as lucrative, too, where you might not want it and go another route. There's, there's a lot of variables here. Well.
Now, did they, and this question for Jackie, I don't know if you can even answer the question, but were they able to forecast out what medical insurance expenses are gonna be 20 years from now or 15 years from now or?
That might be a better question for Mitch as his representative kind of forecasted out. And I don't know if they took.
No, that wasn't part of what they forecasted, no.
And then forecasted.
You're asking, is there, is there, is there some sort of an economic projection of what health insurance rates are gonna go up, I, I don't know, I, I don't, I'm not aware of any data.
I'm not aware.
You know, I mean, typically, I mean, we, what's the average renewal rate?
Sometimes it's zero, sometimes it's 20, maybe 10%, I think healthcare's running at least 8 to 10%.
You've never seen a minus.
Across the.
Right, so the, you know, annual renewal. It goes down. I mean, sometimes, you know, but annual renewals run probably 5 to 10% increases per year.
Yeah, I know we've paid some 20% increases. So I, I know it's gonna be, I mean, 15, 20 years from now, it's gonna be astronomical. So if we look at it for a years period of time even, or two years period of time, even using the figures that we have available today, we're at 70,000 bucks right there. I mean, to me, it's just dollars and cents, but I better shut up.
I just have a problem letting a guy go and then giving him a big fat check on top of it. If I wouldn't own about that, I would've got myself let go a long time ago.
The whole intent of that law was to make sure you got insurance for an employee and his family that can't get it, that's, that's, that's my point, and if that was the circumstances, then, you know, I mean, then it's following the intent of the law, I can see it in the spirit of the law.
Now, does he have to stay in Evans?
No. No.
He can go anywhere. No matter what, he's covered.
Yeah. Except I don't think if you go in another country, I think they. Except I don't think if you go in another country, I think they had some limitations on that at one point.
Well, that would be the carrier's decision, I think.
Yeah.
Whoever carries the insurance.
Well, we're looking at our numbers.
Yeah. Well, tell you what, are you gonna put a motion in order that we accept the agreement between, between the city of Evolith and Jesse Hall?
I'll make that motion.
Do you have a support? Motion dies for lack of support, and we have to take some action on it, don't we, Jackie? We have a motion that we don't accept the settlement agreement but leave it open to negotiation going forward?
I, well, I mean, you could just, I, you don't have to put that part in it. You can just, you can just decline the agreement. And then you should also, as part of that motion, direct whether you want me to drop the contested case.
Okay.
I could make a motion, I think, that we continue to pay his insurance as by stipulation. Drop the, all other proceedings.
Well, you could just, I mean, you just can decline the agreement, because then, if you, if you do those two things, if you decline the agreement and you direct us to discontinue the administrative proceedings, the effect of that will be, he'll continue on the insurance.
So it doesn't have to be stated. It doesn't have to be verbose.
Okay, you got that worded right.
You leave that to me.
You're the vote-verse one, yeah.
You putting that in the motion, John?
Yes, sir.
Do you have a support to that motion?
Yeah, I'll support it.
Motion made by Rousey, support by Koivonen. Any further discussion? What, are you real coupled or just all in favor? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carried. Next item, council presentation, committee reports. I don't know if we, do we have much going on since the last meeting? I think I covered the last airport commission meeting.
Well, we had...
You have HRA, Brian, or something?
Well, we had a public safety committee meeting with the management of the ambulance service, and I guess there's a little bit of a concern about staffing particular shifts to the, to the level that we want them to be staffed at. Kind of falls in the area of recruitment and retention, from my view, where we need to be pretty proactive with that. But long and short of it is that we expect to be meeting again fairly soon, and one of the issues that we're hoping to bring back to the council would be an adjustment to the pay schedule. There's not, that's not been done for the last, or since three years. So we would like to, or we would like the council to consider some potential changes, and we're, we're gonna iron that out at the next meeting, and hopefully we'll have it available for the next full council meeting.
That's good, because those ambulances have been going steady. A lot of calls, lots of calls. I'm wondering, do they have an EMT class at the Votec?
We get them, I can't talk about it.
Yes, they do.
Okay. And imagine, working at ambulance, you have to have completed the course and everything?
License and trees.
You can't take them on like an apprentice or something on there? Okay.
But trees networks pretty closely with college.
Okay.
Very much so.
You know, somewhere, maybe we can get together at the college on a training program and have them working on the ambulance?
And they do ride-alongs with us, so, yeah. They say trees is pretty connected. Some of those people over there are our EMTs.
Because keeping, keeping up with the pay is really important, because I remember a number of years ago, we fell pretty far behind.
Oh, we're a little bit...
I was kind of asking, you know, about that knowing there's made a change for a lot of years, then we put it up where it should be. But no, that pay is a big deal. Anything else, Brian, you got for us?
No, sir. I think that'll about do it.
Johnny, you got anything?
Not a thing.
Joe?
No, rockboard coming up on the eighth, and that's, then we'll have our meeting hopefully in the next few days here, and we're trying to get a golf course meeting together so we could have some figures and, and just, it's right around the corner, knock on wood. Otherwise, that's, you know, it's that time of year. The guys are doing a great job. You know, them trucks are going nonstop. Now they're into the alleys, and there's just so much snow. You know, and if they haven't got to you yet, they are on their way. You know, they've got about three quarters of the city done, and...
See, the county's doing fair road, eh?
Yeah, county's doing fair road.
All those intersections are tough. Where do you put it?
Well, you know, you realize, you don't realize how much snow there is until I was talking to Jerry today about McKinley. And I went out and I looked at my truck, or I looked at the sidewalk. We're four feet away from the sidewalk with the banks on both sides. So one of your widest streets in town is now a single lane. You know, and there's nothing you can do.
And the clinic's really busy thing. You're added another, you know, business there.
They are doing a good job, and then by my garage, I looked outside yesterday, I hear this banging, and it sounds like it's in my back room. I go peek. Them snowbanks there, I could be able to play on them pretty quick, and they're high. We have a lot of snow down there. And it's all gonna go away in the next month or so, so...
Yeah, I hope so.
Otherwise, that's all I got. And it's down to four to six inches this week, and rather than seventeen, so...
You gotta be dropping it right along.
Well, it seems like it's gonna go southern.
Yeah, that's... Oh, this has been a, had a lot of anxiety this winter.
But you know what you hear?
Oh, we needed it for the lakes. Yeah.
Otherwise, that's all I got. Jim, you got anything?
Nothing, no. I haven't heard anything from the joint record at all, have you, Jim?
Um, we did receive a, an email from Craig today. I'll give you the, the email here after we...
And then the superintendent, him and I spoke multiple times. He's gonna be calling that meeting with all of us to get together and talk. So we really understand clearly the lay of the land, so he's working on that.
Okay.
Hey, Jackie, did we have a meeting with the architect with the, about the school one of these days?
Not yet. I'm trying to get the auditors out of the office. I'm just doing that Zoom.
I'm just concerned.
You and Jim are that committee.
Yeah. Because I know that's the next big thing to look at, school buildings.
Yeah.
See where we stand on those. Anything else, Jim, to bring up, or?
No, I'm good.
Brian, anything else?
One other thought came to mind with regard to the HRA. We had a meeting scheduled, which was ultimately canceled. We are having difficulty filling the administrative assistant position up there, so if, I, I guess the process will continue, but I would hope...
We had this last one almost to the boat.
Yeah. We've had a couple of occasions where we've had applicants that have accepted the offer and, and days, maybe even hours before the meeting to approve, they've withdrawn. So it's an unfortunate set of circumstances. So hopefully it's a good work environment up there. We're not so hard to work with, I don't think, and if there's anybody interested in that, perhaps you might make an inquiry, because we're having some difficulty with that part-time position.
Are there any qualifications for that? Do there have to be any?
There are minimum qualifications, you know, some computer skills and some office skills. You know, and it's, it's a part-time job, too. I don't even recall the hours per week.
It's like four hours, ten to, ten to four.
It's like twenty hours a week?
Yeah, four days a week, something like that.
I wonder if, I wonder if somebody from the tech school, you know, they got the clerical classes, their county classes, I mean, part-time job for a student, then you got the work experience on their resume, you know what I mean, too, when they go look, graduate, you get a job. Yeah, maybe you can get somebody like that.
What I feel the worst about is that poor Norma wants to retire. We all know, we want to retire. It's time to retire who wants to retire. And she can't get out of it.
She's been gracious enough to stay with us and take care of business, yeah.
If it was within my power to grant say-to-it, I would give her say-to-it stats, because she is really sticking in there.
That's an interesting part, point about getting someone from the tech school to good, like an intern, like an intern.
Yeah, and you can show them the way you want it run.
Even there, well, the college and the tech school are all one, really, right now. I mean, might have some opportunity. Good, I guess, when they do get, graduate, they got so many hours on a job, actual work, paid work.
You know, it gets bad in your life when you're too old for anything, you're overly qualified for everything. Unless you just go out to the pasture.
Not yet.
Brian, anything else?
No, sir.
But you can't get any help. That seems to be the...
Can't get the help. And boy, I need it.
I'll tell you what, you go to these stores shopping, those are the heroes who show up for work there every day.
Yes, they are.
In restaurants, so you can get something to eat or buy something. I'll tell you what, there, everybody just, you know, you don't, you don't get enough recognition, what it means.
Well, they raised the minimum wage, you know, up to fifteen dollars an hour, which is great, but gas is gonna be five bucks a gallon.
Yeah.
So if you live in a country, it costs you fifteen bucks to get there.
I don't know what's going on with the gas prices. I was down the cities, get by the freeway, it was three fifty-nine. You go a few blocks off, it's three thirty-nine. I mean, it's all over the place.
I think it depends on what they pay that's in their tanks, and then once they get their next refill in their tanks, then they go up and charge the appropriate rate. They were, they were on a good wavelength of, since we have eleven billion dollar surplus, that if you take the state and the federal tax off of the gas, we'd be down about two and a half bucks a gallon.
Yeah.
You know, so they were talking about it, but I don't see it at the pumps yet. And of course, they'll tell you, if we do this, it won't take effect for another year and a half. Well, then what the hell do we need for them?
Well, there was a proposal, wasn't there, from Memorial Day to Labor Day?
I got a one, so, I got a one, guys. Sorry about that.
Okay, Mitch.
As a matter of fact, I think Lisa Black was the one that proposed it.
Yeah, that...
Give up the state tax for the summer?
Since they got that big surplus.
You don't think that judge would like if we told we were bullshitting?
No.
Bye, Mitch.
Oh, I'll tell ya. Yeah, I don't, I don't know what to think. Where the heck were we at? Jesse, you got anything?
I have nothing there. Thank you.
Jerry?
Nothing else, ma'am, thanks.
Ellen, you got any good news, any projects starting or anything?
Not right now, ma'am, nothing yet.
Okay. Steph, you got anything to add? Jackie?
I do. Citywide garage sale, first weekend of May.
Cool. This seems crazy when I saw that notice already. Oh, man. When you look at the snowbanks.
Worst weekend to drive in Evolith.
They look to the right and turn to the left. Well, I don't, I say, I don't have anything to bring up, and I don't think anybody in the audience has anything to bring up. Well, we'll adjourn the meeting.